Welcome to the June 11th, 2024 City Council Meeting. We start with the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens. We pray for your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for directions which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. To the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Getche here.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Eleven present.
Emote to silence, Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for William C. Lesniak, Sr., beloved father, grandfather, great-grandfather, brother, brother-in-law, and uncle. William C. Lesniak, Jr., I'm sorry, Sr., was the beloved husband of the late Cheryl L. Crocker Lesniak, who predeceased him on September 5th, 2012. Bill attended Lowell Schools and was a graduate of Lowell High School. Prior to Bill's retirement, he worked as a foreman for local 429, the laborers' union. Amongst his many interests, William enjoyed going to antique shows with his friends and watching wrestling. William is survived by two sons, William C. Lesniak, Jr., and his wife Laura; Jeffrey A. Lesniak and his wife Carrie; a daughter Kathleen Smart and her husband Robert; nine grandchildren; ten great-grandchildren; two brothers, Henry, Mickey Lesniak and his wife Linda; Mark Lesniak and his wife Jean. He was the brother of the late John Lesniak, Sr., and the late Joan Auger. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who passed on since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Counselor. Mr. Clerk, then lights. Motion to accept a place on file by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Noon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 3, City Clerk. 3.1 minutes of ad hoc Subcommittee Superior Court, House Restoration, May 21st; Parks and Recreation Subcommittee, May 28th; City Council Regular Meeting, May 28th; Art of the Clerk Oversight and Personnel Subcommittee, May 30th; City Council Special Meeting, FY25 Budget, June 4th. For acceptance, a motion to accept a place on file by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Leahy. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 4, City Council motions. 4.1, Counselor Scott. Request City Manager appoint a solid waste and recycling committee to investigate the implementation of new education materials and possible cost alternatives for the solid waste and recycling programs. Seconded by Counselor Yem, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I brought this up during the budget hearings. We have an ordinance, 270-13, which requires a solid waste and recycling Subcommittee. I actually used to serve on this committee. It's the committee that originally brought us the Red Barrel Program that we have right now. And we also made educational materials, and we talked about different plans and strategies to promote education. It's definitely a valuable resource to have, and it's one that I just, it's in ordinance already, and I'd just like to see it brought back. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.2, Counselor Scott. Request City Manager provide a report on the feasibility of implementing a working committee to look at ways and means to address the city's outstanding OPED liability. Seconded by Counselor Janess, Counselor Scott.
Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.3, Counselor Scott. Counselor Getche. Request City Manager provide a report detailing the city's current legal requirements to provide trash pickup to the Lowell Housing Authority and develop a plan to renegotiate the current LHA trash arrangement and payment in lieu of taxes. No second needed. Counselor Scott.
Thank you. Yes, actually, Counselor Getche had mentioned this during the budget hearing, and it was a conversation that I had been having with the CFO at the same time, simultaneously. Really just like to see what our responsibility is, to be fair to the ratepayers in the city, to make sure that there's equitable, you know, fee structure that's happening. I did see online Cambridge currently has a bid out to do trash pickup for their housing authority, so it's not part of their traditional structure. So I don't know if it's mandatory that we do it, but I'd just like a review to see what we're currently doing, what the legal requirements are, and whether or not we should be renegotiating the contract. Thank you.
Counselor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I would just like to see this moved up in the queuing also, just try to get this as quick as we can back as a response so that we can get moving on it. I would agree with everything Counselor Scott said, that if we're paying for a service for others, then we should be making sure that we have the right documentation in place. Thank you.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a good idea to have this discussion and figure out where we're going. I just would like to caution that whatever we do, we need to make sure we're forward-looking where we're going to be renegotiating our solid waste and recycling contract by the end of the year. I'd hate to see us do something and then realize we either didn't do enough or we went the wrong direction. So if we could just keep that in mind as we work through this process, I'd appreciate it.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.4, Counselor Getche. Request City Manager update the city council on the paving of the VFW Highway from Mammoth Road to Magnolia Street. Seconded by Counselor Robinson, Counselor Getche.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. And I know, Mayor Rourke, this is like top priority for you also, is the rest of the council also. I'd just like an update on where are we on the paving process out there? And are we getting close to getting this portion of the VFW paved? And if we have some kind of news right currently, then we don't really need a motion response. If we know where we are in the project right now, I don't really need, I just would like the update so that people at home could understand where we are in that process. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank my colleague for this motion. I know Counselor, Mayor Rourke has brought this forward. I drive this three, four times a week going back and forth from Tingsborough to Brock's, and it's carrying two-ton of hot top and a trailer behind you. You really feel every crevice in that road, and I think it's long overdue. I know the initial holdup was the work to be prepared, done at the COVID. It seems like that's completed. Then it was a pipe or installation of some kind of pipes they were doing over there, some infrastructure work. That seems completed, so hopefully resurfacing is in the pipeline. Thank you.
And also, Mr. Manager, there's an island there. We have air off of VFW Highway where the residents reached out to us a couple of times. Supposedly taken care of, I think, last fall, and hasn't been touched yet. So that small island, I think it's 115, VFW. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.5, Counselor Getche, Counselor Robinson. Request City Manager request the mayor give a status update on selection of the ceremonial mayor position by the voters during the voting process. No second needed. Counselor Getche.
Could we also include the motion response F with this at the same time?
By Counselor Getche, seconded by Counselor Robinson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Motion response F. Counselor Scott.
Oh, sorry about that. I was just going to refer this to the Rules Subcommittee because that's the recommendation at the end of this, so.
Counselor Scott, seconded by Counselor Getche. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes.
Just have a quick comment on the F.
Counselor Yem, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say that this is a great motion response, and I appreciate it. The only concern that I may have is that I would like to see the solicitors speak with the leading attorney, Orin Selstrom, who represent the plaintiff in the lawsuit to break up the voting system. He represent the lawyers commission for civil rights, so do they have any other input in regarding to changing? Because they don't want to file the motion, the lawsuit against the city to break up the voting system. A consent decree, so I'm not sure if they have anything saying in that we need to change the mayor's voting. So I would just, it's just my thoughts. Thank you.
I'm sure that you brought up the Rules Subcommittee, but just as far as my recollection, Counselor, after the first two years, that goes away. So Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Through you to the solicitor. Is that consent decree now outdated, as far as you know? As far as participation required from any of the litigants?
Ms. Lesniak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, no, I mean, the consent decree, that goes on in perpetuity. So if there were anything that needed to be changed, or if we wanted any to propose changes, we would have to file something in federal court to make changes to that consent decree. Once it's there, it's there.
I don't mean specifically the consent decree that we agreed to, but as far as changing something along these lines, do we still, are we restricted by approval from the other party still with this? Or is this something that if it was the wish of the council, we would just have to go through the normal process to make those changes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I think any change that were proposed by the council, you know, you would have to, we would have to go through the consent decree to make sure that, you know, we could, our legal opinion, that it still was in line with what was ultimately put forward through the consent decree. I think if we're to deviate and veer from that, then we would want to go through the court and do it appropriately and, you know, file a petition to make a change to the consent decree. But if we were to make any changes that were in line with what was put forward in the consent decree, there would be, there would be no, I would have no issue with that.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if it's concerned with the other side, meaning the consent decree and the petitioners on the other side, the public's, the Subcommittee meeting is open to public anyway, so they're welcome to come, or maybe invite them to come, you know, to comment on it if they have any, you know, wish to come and comment on it. So I understand that with the consent decree, you're going to communicate back, well, communicate with them anyway. I doubtful that they will say anything in oppositions to what the Rules Subcommittee decided and bring it back to the council, and whatever process we have, or whatever decision we want, go that step forward. So, and I do also appreciate the motion respond that you, Mr. Solicitor, you know, have sent to us, the council, and, you know, coincidence happened to be same time that Counselors Eric Getche and Robinson filed the motion. So it's good, it's good timing.
So the motion on the floor is sent, this motion by Counselor Getche to Robinson, and also the motion response was made by Counselor Scott, and seconded by Counselor Getche to the Senator Rules Subcommittee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. 4.6, Counselor Robinson. Request City Manager and administration explore the feasibility of establishing a solid waste recycling enterprise fund in comparison to our current organizational structure. Seconded by Counselor Noon, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I just think with the cost of waste and recycling and everything, you know, going up, 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 it's worth taking a look at. And I know this is something that would take a lot of conversation, a lot of looking at. So I think getting this on the floor to kind of see if we can nudge the administration. I know you have plenty of things in the kiosk, but if this is something that you could start to look at, it'd be great to find out, is that a direction we could go in the future? Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.7, Counselor Robinson. Request City Manager have the property department provide quarterly reports on parking, placate program, including how many are signed up, revenue generated, et cetera. Seconded by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Motion speaks for itself.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.8, Counselor Robinson. Request City Manager have the property department update the See Something, Say Something graphic with a consideration of a rollout campaign. Seconded by Counselor Mercier, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. I brought this up several times on the floor. This graphic that we had on file a while ago was very useful and helpful, I found, with a lot of my residents in my neighborhood, as well as citywide. And it was just a simple scenario of like a bench, corner of a store with broken sidewalk, a street light out, just basic graphic, and it kind of identified if you see something broken, who to contact with, the number and the name. So I mean, if we could kind of expand on that, again, even if English might not be your primary language, but I think this is something, a solid graphic allows a lot of people to be able to identify a problem that they see and reach out to the corresponding phone number. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.9, Counselor Robinson. Request City Manager provide a detailed report on what plans are in place to ensure safe usage of our South Common swimming pool for all our residents. Seconded by Counselor Janess, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. Do we have any registered speakers on this? No. Okay. You know, the South Common, it's been on the floor for conversation quite a bit since I've been involved with the council. I have pictures that were sent to me recently, today. I believe LTC has some pictures I'd like to put on the screen. I mean, and I have to say thank you to the DPW Parks Department. They've been over there countless man-hours, but I mean, they just cleaned it Friday, and I mean, as you can see through the pictures, you keep going through the images, it's heartbreaking to see that this section of our city is dealing with many issues, I think, many failures that have happened from all levels. I mean, this is a location that's .6 miles from our inning conference center, for example. The governor has toured, the Congresswoman has toured the city, they have plenty of press conferences with all the good news that they're bringing in, but yet we're stuck facing and dealing with this day in and day out. Our syringe coordinator is picking up, on average, 60 to 70 syringes a day, some weeks, out of this location. It seemed like last year, we took a few steps forward, we're 20 steps backwards again. We have the Pirates, the pro-arena football team, that's volunteering their time to help run camps and clinics for kids in the community, and this is the best we can do, the best environment that we can provide? I mean, in addition to that, this is a city where we're fully integrated with water, from canals to two different rivers, and swimming saves lives. We have two public pools that are operational throughout the city, and this is the site of one of them that we're going to be teaching swim lessons at, and families, we're going to invite in families and kids into this area? I just think, never mind the manpower, how many hours, what's the cost to clean this? Where we see the DPW is struggling to maintain what they're tasked with, and at the same time, we're forcing eight hours on every Friday to go through and clean this location. And it's like this, this is Tuesday, so in a matter of a few days, we're back to this situation. I mean, you can see trash barrels overflowing, and it's not the public works. They could go there twice a day, and it's still going to be this situation. What are we doing as far as leasing, resources, offering alternatives? I think we're in trouble. I really do. When I see this thriving like this again, when we had a decent grip on it last year, and it just, it seems like it's gone backwards immediately. We've had 5,500 people in attendance for professional hockey, women's hockey at the arena, not too long ago, maybe a month ago, and everyone raved and ranted about that, but no mention of conditions like this. If I took the train up here to go to that game, that's what I'm exposed to. That's a portion of Lowell that people are going to be introduced to. That's the experience that we're putting out there on a pedestal, because it's unavoidable. But yet, we've had higher-level politicians come to that area to do a press conference, and the place is manicured, and everyone's kicked out, leading up to that event. I think we need to come up with a solid, solid plan of attack. I think if it's a matter of more resources, well, the next time that we have governors and congresspeople in our backyard, let's walk them over there and let them see the struggle that we all are familiar with, the struggle that we all deal with on a daily basis, the struggle that we are trying to exhaust every possible resource that we can to try to deal with this. I know it's a multitude of problems that's leading to this, but I think we need to really focus, because we're in June. I'm not sure when the opening day of that pool is going to be to start the swim lessons. Kids are getting out of school now, but in my opinion, that's no place to invite families or kids into right now, with 60 to 70 syringes a day being picked up. And thank God for the Pirates organization. I mean, I'm all about bringing positive to negative locations. That's what we're doing. But what are we doing as a city to embrace and show them that we support these positive activities occurring in a place that's kind of being overrun by the negatives? So I really hope that we're going to prioritize and ensure that we're going to throw everything we have at this situation, whatever that looks like. I'll be eagerly anticipating and waiting for this response, and I think it's very time-sensitive with the pools opening soon. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hate to say it, but everything that Counselor Robinson said is actually absolutely the truth. I see how hard the DPW crew, every single Friday, the city manager has people down there from the co-op team, trying to sign them up for whatever problems they need to discuss, come over to 291 Summer Street, they come over there. It's just amazing to see the work that goes into cleaning that South Common, and it isn't on Tuesday, it's the very next day. It's back to looking disastrous, and I'm embarrassed by it. I know the people have to go somewhere, but there's people that are out there, they don't want any help, they like their lifestyle, you give them something free, they throw the wrappers away, there's a barrel right there, they don't even bother throwing it. And I'm telling you that we have a pool there, and last year, I know for a fact, they were climbing up over the fence, and they were using the pool as a bathing area, and then climbing back out over it. They can't get a job, but they can climb up a fence that I probably could never do. But be that as it may, I hate to be critical, but I don't know what to say. I don't know where to begin, but I'm just devastated by what I see over there. And it's because they have amenities, they have services right there, they have the Elliott Church, they have free food, they have services, they have everything that they need. Life Connections is closed. I think the needle exchange is taking place still, but the place is closed. I mean, it's devastating. I don't know what to tell you, in the heat of the summer, it's not even here yet, and there's a lot of trouble. When there's heat mixed with drugs, you get a lot of trouble, and I hear about it.
Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I ask the chief to come to the lectern for a second? Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Counselor.
You've heard Counselor Robinson, Counselor Mercier. We saw the pictures. I'm just asking, asking you what your policemen and officers are seeing over there, and what is your opinion at this point? I know it's not an easy question, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but those pictures are pretty graphic, and Counselor Robinson did bring up some very good points.
Counselor, my officers, my team, the resources that we've dedicated to that area, we've increased our number of arrests there, and I'm told, and I see it, you know, that we're making, last week, I'll give you an example, we made over 13 arrests in that area last week. Two hours later, many of the people that we arrested were already back at the street, actually laughing at my officers. We don't have any control over what happens after they're arrested and processed. All we can do is continue to do our job and conduct enforcement in that area, and that's what we're going to continue to do. When and where those operations are going to take place, they're not going to be disclosed, but they're going to be ongoing, and we're going to do our job and try to reduce the number of drugs that are in that area. We know it's a problem, we know why it's there. Unfortunately, there are some geographical things in that area that draw that crowd to that location. Until some of those situations are resolved, there's not a lot we can do, except continue to conduct enforcement.
Counselor Getche.
Through you, to the chief, while he's here. Chief, the thing that's mind-boggling to me is how do homeless people get drugs? Who's actually delivering, who's the source to them? And that's the line we need to start cutting off. I don't, and I'm sure that there's a bigger picture than what I just said, but, you know, it just seems as though, how does a homeless person end up with all these drugs and all these needles everywhere? And I think that that's always the concern piece, is because somebody's living in a mansion while we're all here trying to fight and spend pennies to clean this thing up.
Counselor, I would just suggest that I'm not 100% convinced that everybody that's out there is homeless. I believe there's probably 20% or so, from what the information I have, of those that are in that area that are actually homeless. The other people are coming out to hang out and party. And where they're getting it?
So that that's the key, is the people who are bringing it to their, it's 80% versus the 20%.
And those are also part of our investigations that we have. You know, we always try to work on that aspect of it as well, not just the user, but the distributors.
Thank you.
Counselor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Robinson. The pictures speak. Love, lower. I thanks DPWs as well for their work, and the chief, and, you know, and his staff. But you know that, you know, for some reason, I heard of a word that you can't arrest your way out of this situation. You know, especially when you do make those arrests, the court's going to let them out the next day. Right? So there need to be a communication with the providers, and resource need to be put forth to work with these providers, so to address these issues. We have to be sincere about it and commit to doing that. It's not like, you know, whenever it happened, okay, we do it, and then the next day, go away, and then we said, okay, we all set. That has to be a continuing work on these issues. Housing, someone said it, correct. We do need more of it. I think, you know, we need to be careful on this, because as Counselor Robinson suggested or stated, that summer school is done next week, and some of those kids, some of those parents are going to send their kid to swim lessons, to swim there. If I'm a parent, I'd be concerned too, safety of my children. I'm not making alarm, because I know that the chief's going to have his staff being there and making sure that none of this will happen, but you never know, could happen. So I think paramount important that we look into this and work with providers to submit or supply or share resource, or give resource so that they can have the resource to address these issues, so that we don't see this again. I'd also like Counselor Robinson, the next motion, to speak to that as well. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, my colleague, for bringing this forward. Thank you for DPW for all their work on this situation every week. Thank you to the chief for you and your team's work on this. As Counselor Noon said, this isn't a problem we can arrest our way out of. We've seen it, and LPD has done a fantastic job using the tools they have to try and solve this problem. Unfortunately, we're faced, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place here. I don't know what the answer is. I don't know that anybody knows what the answer is, but, you know, I appreciate having these conversations, but sometimes I do feel like we've been talking in circles for the few years that I've been here. I don't know what the answer is, but, Mr. Manager, I would encourage you to reach out to surrounding communities, other cities, see what kind of strategies folks have had, and if they've had any success with them. You know, whatever we can do to try to make this a more attractive place for our residents, our visitors, to use this space, I think is going to be effort well-spent. I appreciate a lot of the things we've done to try to improve the area, to try to activate the park more, things like that help, but they obviously aren't. the, the park more, things like that help, but they obviously aren't the, the golden solution here. So, I encourage you to keep looking, and include us in these conversations, and let us know what we can do to help, so we can make this really the jewel of the city that it really should be. Thank you.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. Couple questions. Have we considered installing more cameras there, for one? Seems obvious. Install more cameras, I don't care if they're visible. Maybe it's a deterrent, maybe it isn't, I mean, we'll see. But I think that's one piece that might help our law enforcement over there. Another piece, through you to the solicitor, what legs do we have to enforce a, say, no loitering ordinance in, in public green space? I mean, you know, it, it's, it's one thing if a family is sitting on a picnic blanket in a park, enjoying themselves, it's another thing if I'm breaking open nip after nip, or whatever else I'm doing. I think that's a clear distinct difference, what your usage of that green space is. By all means, I encourage all of our residents to go out and enjoy the green space, that's what it's there for. But enjoying the green space does not include public drinking, it does not include all of these other things that are offenses. And so, is, is that an area we need to look? I, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, how do we equip not only our police, but also our outreach teams, the co-op, all the service providers out there, to kind of discourage some of the stuff that's occurring over there? The tents and, and all of these things, that the food that's being left behind, the debris and trash, and, and where do we, what's our inroad to begin to make a dent on some of this reoccurring stuff? And, and I know we've discussed many times, so, I mean, I hope with the motion response comes back, there'll be some thought-outs suggestions moving forward that at least can allow us to empower those that need whatever, to start to scratch the surface on this problem. Thank you.
All the fair say aye. Pause motion passes for ten. Councilor Robinson requests the mayor to reach out to service providers, to the unhoused, to explore ways to create warming and cooling center space due to recent changes with some organizations operating in this area of service. Second. Second by Councilor Nune.
There are registered speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clerk.
This goes by Ozil.
Thank you all for having me again. Good evening. Thank you for, Councilor Robinson, for bringing this motion forward. To all the city councilors and staff, to those in attendance, and to the dozen or so LTC viewers on TV, pause for laughter. As Kendrick Delorb, former, former aide for Congresswoman Lori Turhan so astutely pointed out, this matter is, is of great importance to us all, regardless of our respective living situations, although it is most definitely affects the homeless community the most. Whether it's people who are unhoused, the elderly population, children, the disabled, or any cross-section of these most vulnerable groups, this affects us all. I learned from Melanie Gilbert of the Lowell Sun, via the EPA, that extreme heat kills more people than all other climate and weather-related issues combined. That said, even if there ends up being a small turnout, what's the cost of even one single life lost and the benefits of one life saved? Consider your yes vote and continued support as an investment in humanity, rather than a line item on a spreadsheet. Thank you to councilors Janess, Nune, Leahy, and Murcia for your yes votes when this motion was previously brought to the table, and thank you to, and to Mayor Rourke, and councilors Scott, Getzier, Yem, Chow, and Descoto, I humbly ask for your support this time around. We need to ensure that every Lowellian, homeless or otherwise, has a place to go, especially in extreme weather. We can do so, we can do so by utilizing available funding and seeking additional funds for entities such as the Lowell Transitional Living Center, excuse me, to be earmarked for these specific purposes. In conjunction with funding organizations who have the infrastructure in place, it would be wise to consider pop-up or mobile brick and, and/or brick-and-mortar locations. Also, I understand that the ship has more than likely sailed on this, but why no effort was made to save Life Connections, who provided these exact type of services, is truly baffling. We're spinning our wheels on this, and believe me, I know, being a former DoorDash driver, I know, I'm an expert on spinning my wheels. In conclusion, as I've done on a few occasions in the recent past, I cordially invite you all to speak directly with some of the most affected Lowellians, the unhoused population. Whether it's a walk-through the neighborhood, a community forum, or a one-on-one conversation, I believe it would benefit you and everyone else if you heard the feedback directly from the people. My friends and I at From Solidarity Lowell have been and will continue to have such conversations, and I invite you to do the same. Too often, our voices are left out of the decision-making process, but if I have anything to do with it, it'll no longer be the case. With all due respect, in my six years-plus of being at LTLC, I've never seen a single city councillor, mayor, or otherwise, visit us. Please reach out to me at any time if you'd like to do so.
Giovanna Mason.
Hello, my name is Giovanna Mason, I live at 415 Pawtucket Street in Lowell. I'm here to speak in support of motion four point ten. I wanna thank Councilor Robinson for bringing this motion forward again after several discussions previously. I also wanna echo Ozil's statements and thank the councillors who originally supported this motion when it was brought to the table. It is valuable that our city continues these efforts to find warming and cooling centers to serve all our community members during dangerous weather events. I'm going to go a little bit off-script, so if I stutter, please do not make fun of me. I, I heard a lot about South Common, it is a place where we know people are, and I want you to take into consideration that the policing and, and more loitering notices, people still are going to find somewhere to go. And if we provide opportunities for them to go and use their substances safely in a, in a controlled environment, that can be safe for them and also safe for the community, that is a milestone. So, the, the reason why I wanted to speak today is to support this motion for a warming and cooling center, but to also please, I echo again what Ozil stated, like, please listen to the vulnerable members of our community who are experiencing these issues, and why are they outside? You know, we hear a lot about, oh, they're, they're not going to LTLC because they don't want to. Why? Why don't they want to? Why would anyone want to make that choi? I, I just don't think that people make these choices lightly to, to live outside and, and not receive the care that we offer to them. There are reasons. So, so first, I, I think the warming and cooling centers, please include a specific written protocol that indicates the high and low temperatures, including wind chill and those factors, to ensure that this plan can continue to be implemented. You know, we had, back in the winter, we were like, when are you going to turn the plan on? Let's just set a weather setting so that it can just go into effect at any moment's notice. And then, secondly, the city should work with community partners and impacted people to see what is most needed, and evaluate why have these centers been, been underutilized in the past? And these factors to consider, we, we drew these from best practices recommended by the state of Massachusetts, as well as conversations with folks who have not been access, accessing these spaces in the past. That potential warming and cooling center could close these gaps and provide more people service by including bathroom and shower facilities, so they don't have to use the South Common pool. I don't think people want to use the pool to bathe, they don't have anywhere to bathe. Offer a twenty-four-hour option with the availability, with the ability to sleep indoors as long as the centers are open, or, in example, as long as the extreme weather event lasts. You know, if you go somewhere and you haven't slept for three days and they tell you you still can't sleep, then, yeah, you might go outside to sleep. Include an option for people with substance use disorder to access warming and cooling centers. No one deserves to die because they're battling a disease. I absolutely agree, in, in the hot weathers, when you are using substances, it takes an even more dangerous toll on your body, and there, those people are at even more risk. They're not just a threat to, you know, the eye-pleasing view of South Common, their health is at risk, and they need a place to go.
Ms. Mason, your time is up, can I wrap up, please?
Just, and include families and couples to stay together. People, people support each other, people need their pets, people need their community. So I just thank you for this motion, I ask you to support it today and just take these thoughts into consideration moving forward. Thank you.
Dottie Joyce.
Ma'am, is that you? Yeah.
Thank you, Robinson, Councilor Robinson. I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna talk from my hat. I seen these homeless people, they're not, some are mostly up on Summer Street. I live at Mass Mills. They at the park down there, shooting up, they are. I'm unsafe for me, I tell you right now, I don't go out of my apartment this time at night. I feel unsafe, not with, it just, with the home, it's not the homeless, but the, somebody going, I'm gonna come right out, what I'm gonna say, these migrants, I feel unsafe with the migrants and the homeless, they come up to my car, and I'm sitting there, and, I'm a senior citizen, and I got my granddaughter with me, she feel unsafe. You need to find someplace for these to shower, where it hot, have a place for them to go. When it's cold, they've been out in the tent this winter. I think that inhuman. They should be housed somewhere. I got a friend, he gonna get evicted from her apartment, she got a teenager, she can afford her rent, but she can't get no help. Repeat, us people from Lowell can't get help, but the migrant can get help? I'm sorry, but the unhoused, they should be helped. They should be in a place when it's so hot, or if it's cold, and, and a place to go to shower in the bathroom. And, that's how I feel. And, and I bout to move out Lowell, because I feel very unsafe here. I've been here a long time. Rita Mercy, you know, was me, I used to live up on Summer Street. I go up there, it's a terrible place, and the veteran home that was there, she closed it down, because the veteran said she was, it was unsafe to live there. So, she closed that down, and they made it something else. So, I relate to council, or the city council, or the mayor, the manager, to help to find a place for these homeless to go. And by the way, when I was going for my treatment this morning, Gom Street to Locaneta, at beginning of Locaneta, there was a tent between the two guardrail. Came back at three, it was still there. What happened, the car rolled over, it hit the person in that tent. It's where, at the end of, we come down by Gom Street and Locaneta, there was a steel tent there. I don't know if it's there, 'cause I called the police when I got back, 'cause I feel it was unsafe for someone to be there.
Ms. Joyce.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Councilor Robinson.
Thank you. This motion was brought forward because it was brought to my attention by one of our residents, that Life Connections is closed, as far as this, this portion of it. I believe the Elliott Church is, is limited as to what they're providing now. I, I think we need to find a compromise with the community here. I wanna be clear, the city does not have the bandwidth, we do not have the facility, we do not have a location to accommodate and facilitate this void in, in, in the area of social service currently. What we do have is a team of people here that realize the importance of filling this void, providing this service in the community, assisting, being an ally. We've had many organizations come to the podium that operate in this area of social service. So, I mean, this is pretty much a call from the city out to the community. If any of our nonprofit organization partners, some of the larger ones that, that might be better equipped, that are already operating in this sphere, we desperately need heating and cooling stations, and, and I think we all agree. I think these heating and cooling stations need to provide basic necessities for, for the people that need it the most. Again, I think some great points were raised by the speakers, allowing couples and families, members of the community that support each other, to be able to attend these heating and cooling stations together and continue that support. Showers, no-brainer. Every human on earth needs a shower, I mean, that, that's a basic necessity. Bathrooms, I mean, these things have to be part of this, and, and I just hope that because the city of Lowell does not have the bandwidth, this is not our area of expertise, I think our role in this is helping to facilitate the resources to provide a community partner to step up and provide these services to a community that desperately needs it right now. And so, I hope my colleagues agree that if, if it's a matter of us contributing resources to a partner in the community that might have the space and the bandwidth to fill this gap, I think that's a discussion worth having to, to see, and, and, and partner with an ally that's willing to rise to this challenge, and, and so, pretty much, I can't be clearer. This is a call to action for any of these organizations out there that are operated in this space, and so, please, if, if you feel like you can accommodate this, get in touch with the administration, get in touch with the counselor, and let's begin that conversation, because before we know it, we'll be in the middle of a ninety-degree heat wave, and, and we'll be still struggling to provide these opportunities to the people that need it. Thank you.
Through the comments, I'll say a couple things from up here. I was gonna comment on motion four point nine, but we didn't to this one. You know, we just had a fifteen-minute conversation about South Common and the so-called unhoused that, that live there, but then the flip side, we got four ten, which we wanna give more services to these people. You know, so which one is it? This is a contradiction in the last two motions. And we're talking about needle exchange, you know, showers, and warming and cooling centers. The manager will get this motion, he'll come back, we'll have the homeless director here, we'll have the health department director here, and then he'll say the same thing he told us for the past two years. We ask every single person that we go talk to, through the co-op team and whatnot, do you want help? Do you want housing? It's always offered, and it's consistently turned down. So, what do we do? We offer more services to keep them unhoused, to keep them outside. So I'm not sure, you know, how the manager's gonna answer four point nine, four point ten, by trying to clear these people out and keep the parks safe, but at the same time, offering cooling centers, offering needles, offering food, off, you know, and, and when we ask them what they want, and we offer them housing, and they say no, and now it comes back on the police department, it comes back on DPW for not doing their job. So, you know, I don't know how you wanna do this, again, for fifteenth time in the past, you know, two and a half, three years. You know, we have services here unmatched anywhere else in the state, and we keep on, you know, running around in the same circles, but what's it gonna be? Do you wanna clear the parks out and keep it safe for people to use it? Or do you wanna keep offering services that are gonna allow these people to stay outside and stay in unsafe areas and to live on, on the street or in our parks? You know, maybe as a council, and as an administration, we gotta make a decision what we're gonna do, and, and pick one and go from there. But, you know, you see stuff like this, and, you know, you wonder why we, you know, run in quicksand, so.
Don't listen to the actual unhoused, don't do that.
Thank you, yeah. So, you know, now what we want to do, but, any other comments? Council Getchea, Council Robinson?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I do think the city has been engaged in the unhoused. When we look at the opera spending that we have been putting in, and I don't think people are gonna understand when that dries up, are there grants from the state? Where is the state? State population has gone down, Lowell's population has gone up, and we're trying to help. I wish everybody had a home, there's no question, we all wish these things out there, but how do we create this? And I think that the manager and his team have tried this. I agree with the motion about having cooling and heating stations, but as the maker of the motion had said, where? How? And, you know, to keep strapping the manager with this, we've asked this question multiple times, you know, where, how? Do we open the senior center? Is that what we do? But if we open the senior center, then, you know, you get what you get for the maintenance of the building, which is already in deplorable condition as it is. You look at our schools, they're in deplorable condition to bring people into. So that's the question, is how do we figure this out? We only have so much and no one's giving to us. Through you to the manager, Mr. Manager, have we applied for every grant we can to try to combat these situations? To your knowledge?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. I could never say every grant possible, but...
To your knowledge?
Yeah, to my knowledge, we do apply for a lot of grants through DPD as well as HHS. But I would never say every grant because I wouldn't know if that were true or not.
I agree with every single speaker who has spoken, on every single piece that they've spoken. I mean, there is really, okay, so don't just speak, give us the solution. You come up and you speak and you throw it on us and we sit here going, okay, do I invest this money into our school system and try to give K through eight? They're just do. Do I go back and give funds back to the taxpayer and try to get them so that they can afford their housing? Where do we go? And if there are places, I would like one of the speakers to come up and tell us how to do it, because I'm all ears, I'm ready to go jump right in, but it has to be something that's manageable. I haven't seen the governor here, I haven't seen the money boiling in. I saw her drive right by the overpass, you know, she's been here how many times? So I think that that's the challenge, is where's the funding to go along with this to help? Housing is, like they said, let's create more housing. Well, we just create more population, more population, more problems, and here it is. We had the In-N-Out Conference Center, why didn't we put the homeless in there instead of migrants? We didn't know it was available, we just got told, so. I do feel for each person in here, we all have a heart, but where is it that we're gonna get these resources? And if the speakers would certainly want to meet in one of the subcommittees and give us the outs, I'm willing to listen. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the question I have, Counselor, and, you know, we've all asked it many times before, when they're asked, do you want to go to a shelter? Do you want, you know, they brought a bus last year to the South Common, right? And they asked everybody at the South Common, do you want to get in the bus? Do you want to go get help? Not one person got in the bus. So let's give them a shower and cooling center and needles.
I do understand what they're saying, is that when it's hot and cold out, send somebody over there to try to get people in. But last time, when it was really cold out, we had the homeless director here and we asked, did you go to the camps? Did you ask them to come in? And nobody wanted to come in, that's what we were told. I can only go on the, I'm not at, and as one of the speakers said, I am not at the homeless shelter down there, you know, I don't have that much time to go.
Many times.
Counsel Janess, and Counsel Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think, as has been said, this is something we've brought up before, talked about before, and we need help with. This is not something that the city of Lowell has the bandwidth, the funding, the expertise to be able to do. I disagree a little bit, Mr. Mayor, with your contention that 4.9 and 4.10 are at odds. I think there's an opportunity here to be complimentary, to try and get people out of the South Common and into services. And yes, that is something we've struggled with. The city has offered those services to folks and they haven't been accepted. Is it because we aren't offering the right kind of services? I don't know. Is it because folks just don't want anything? I don't know. These are all questions that there are people much more well-equipped to answer than I am. But I will say, I think that this provides an opportunity. I've been saying for a while now that instead of just saying to the state, to the governor, we need help, we need you to come down here and fix this problem, or help us fix this problem, I think we need to start working with local organizations to build concrete plans and take those to the state. Maybe we have a service organization here who's interested in doing something like this, but they don't have the assets to do it, they don't have the funding to do it, but they know kind of the working pieces around it. They know that if they get a building of X number of square feet and staff it with Y number of people, they'll be able to service Z number of people. And maybe they can put a business plan together that says, to do this in this way, it's gonna cost us some number. And then you take that plan and you go to the state government and you say, rather than just say, need help with this issue, you say, I need help implementing this concrete plan. We want to buy a building, we want to do this, we want to do this, and we expect the outcomes to be this. I think if you can put something like that together with experts in the field, you have a much greater chance of success, of being able to move the needle. So that's what I would say. I agree with Counsel Robinson saying this is, you know, a call for help and for ideas from the service providers in our community. And to the speaker's point, you know, the unhoused should be part of this discussion as well. It's something that is gonna take a whole lot of people rowing in the right direction, in the same direction at the same time, in order to get anywhere with. I think we all can appreciate that. Those are my thoughts. I'd like to see this pass and hear back from the manager on something like that. Thank you.
You know, the House just last week passed a $6.5 billion housing bill, right? You know, and get the police chief back up here again, and I'll ask him, when his co-op team goes out there, and Council Mercy knows this because she's there every single day along with me, do you want help? Do you want to come with us? And the answer says no, you arrest him for trespassing, and he's right, they're back out there 15 minutes because trespassing is a non-jailable offense. It's a $50 fine and you move on, and nowadays, the money gets waived. So, Counsel Robinson, go ahead.
Thank you. First, I'd like to read the language of this motion. Request city manager reach out to service providers for the unhoused to explore ways to create warm and cooling center space due to recent changes with some organizations operating in this area of service. I was clear, the city cannot do this. We don't have the bandwidth. Can we find resources to empower a community organization that already has established relationships with this community? Organization in the community that's already working with this patient base? An organization that's familiar with this community? Do they need something from the city to continue operating? And as far as having the conversation for the administration, we need an organization to step up. One of the organizations that has been critical of what we do or don't do, well, we need you. We want an ally, we want a partner, here's a void that we're all hearing loud and clear. I don't see how these two things conflict. And in the past two and a half years, I've put motions forward that I've never even got a response on. I've provided all kind of legal cases from other communities that have been implemented to kind of address a lot of these situations that we're facing over in South Common on deaf ears. I've yet to see something implemented. We want to start talking about, you know, providing. One of the things I filed a motion on is the syringe exchange, where, yes, the state governs it, but at the same time, the host community has some authority to rail it in. It seemed like it was the Wild West for a little bit. That seems like it's starting to get better, finally. A lot of these issues, it's not like the council hasn't brought forward ideas and initiatives to try to address this. It just seems like continuously it falls on deaf ears in some areas. As I mentioned, last summer, it seemed like we had a pretty good grip starting to go on a lot of this vagrancy, illicit drug use out in the public space situation, which is just 1/20th of the situation we're seeing currently. But for whatever reason, we lost grip on that. There's a million components that are going into the final result here. And I'll repeat this again, the city cannot provide these cooling and warming stations, but yet, those that operate in this sphere are familiar with this community and have the bandwidth to do this, we are looking to partner with you and work with you and help you provide resources if need be. But this is not a DPW issue. This is not something that we can arrest our way out of, as my colleagues have explained, although the arrests are an integral part of it when it comes to open and lewd grossness, when it comes to open prostitution, when it comes to the illicit activity of using illegal substances in public space. I mean, all of us have to play a part in this. And so to try to say that one contradicts the other, absolutely not. Because when we're looking at 20 different problems rolled into one ball, then there's 20 different plans of attack we're gonna have to come up with. And the city can only manage to take care of a limited few. We need community partners, and more importantly, as my colleagues stated earlier, we need state and federal partners. I mean, a $6 billion housing bill, that sounds great and it's put in from the state. The state has the Superior Courthouse sitting vacant less than a quarter mile from this location of South Common, but if they have a $6 billion housing bill, why aren't they stepping up to rehab this property that is in their control currently? So don't give me on paper or what the latest press release says, let's take a walk down and look in our backyard, and you show me how that $6 billion housing bill is being implemented to help the people that really need the help the most. Thank you.
Counsel Getchea?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to highlight one other thing. We did do a homeless, I mean, a housing summit at UMass Lowell. This council was represented there, but very few communities even showed up, even after being invited, and the manager had reached out to do that. And, you know, this is a challenge, has been outlined by everybody, and we're sitting here still scratching our head, wondering, and the real issue is our mental health issue in this state. That's why we have all of these issues. So if we're gonna combat, let's combat the truth and not try to mask it with all of these outliers. Yes, you can make someone comfortable, but how do you change a life? And changing a life comes with the mental health issue, and I think we gotta really somehow provide that end, and that was taken away long ago. So I do think that, I'm interested in seeing these two reports, but I don't know what will come out of them. Thank you.
All's in fairness, say aye. opposed motion passes 411. Counsel Robinson?
Mr. Mayor? Can I make a motion to suspend the rules to take items 5.2 and 5.3 out of order? We have some members of the public here who are being appointed and...
Second.
Second. Motion by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Robinson. Counsel Getchea, take 5.2 and 5.3 out of order. All's in fairness, say aye. opposed motion passes 5.2. Communication appointments to Lowell Sustainability Council? We have two, Ryan Oats and Kevin...
Solei.
Solei, thank you, Kevin. We need a motion to adopt by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Getchea. Is it roll call or a motion? Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Getchea?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Newman?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Dakota?
Yes.
11 years.
Thank you, everyone. Kevin Solei, 237 Acropolis Road, Potagaville. I'm here to represent myself on the Sustainability Committee and just want to make this city a better place to ride a bicycle and go outside and exist. So those are the two things, you know, I like outdoor recreation and cycling, and so I want to make it a better place. That's all.
Mr. Solei, thank you for your service. Is Mr. Oats here? No? Okay. 5.3 Communication Appointments to the Library Board of Trustees. We have two, Courtney McSparren and Jack Moynihan. You don't do enough, Jack. Got a motion to adopt by Counsel Newman, second by Counsel Janess. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercy?
Yes.
Counsel Newman?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yem?
Yes.
Counsel Chow?
Yes.
Is Ms. McSparren here?
I just want to thank you guys for this honor. As a lifelong library patron and supporter, I am very excited about this. When moving to Lowell, I told my real estate agent I could only purchase a house within walking distance of a library, and I had no idea how lucky I was when that library happened to be the Pollard Memorial Library. I have been overwhelmed by the library's interconnectedness and reflection of this city. The library is the space where so many important quality-of-life initiatives flourish. The city is greener thanks to Pollard Sea Library and composting workshops, also thanks to Mill City Grows. Research shows that the more often children read fiction, the more empathetic they are, and this city and library are working together to give children the tools they need to be empathetic, supportive citizens. The city is supporting neighbors coming together across class, race, age, and experience thanks to the programs at the Pollard Memorial Library. The welcoming of newcomers is essential to the fabric of Lowell and is reflected beautifully in the library's English reading and writing programs. The library allows the city and its residents to access information, entertainment without costs, meaning less waste, more equity, and more connection over shared experience. The library has been incredibly important part of my time as a Lowell citizen, and I look forward to supporting it and ensuring its successful future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moynihan?
Jack Moynihan, 88 Prescott Street. I want to thank everyone, the manager, Golden, and then your staff, Mayor Rourke, all the counselors, and just want to say, and also the other trustees of the library. I just want to say that Mary Sampas, the late Mary Sampas, used to say that the library was the most democratic of institutions. I'm very honored to be appointed and I'll do the best I can. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Mr. Mayor, just as the Housekeeping, no Counsel Getchea, we recorded this, yes, on that vote.
Thank you. Counsel Robinson?
Thank you. I'd just like to say, you know, growing up in the city, it's my experience with the library was, my brother and I and my mom, we would watch Reading Rainbow on TV. We'd get a list together of books that we wanted to read, and we'd go into the library when my mom would take us down during the summer months, we were on school vacation. With that list in hand, we'd show it to the librarian, pick our books for the week, read them, repeat the following week. Times have changed tremendously since those days. I just had this conversation, believe it or not, with one of our local bookstore owners out of all people. And their remark to me was, boy, our library has definitely changed 180 degrees. The days of walking into a cold building where children weren't really encouraged to run around, to talk to others, to browse, it was just kind of walk in, get what you're here for, and go. That's the days of the old library. Nowadays, they're making a very conscious effort to make our library a welcoming place for teens, for youth, for young children, for adults alike. They're showing children different opportunities for reading. I heard a story of a child that didn't really like books until they were shown, is it, I might even butcher the name of this, Manga? It was explained to me how they read the book from the back, and that little difference with that style of reading was enough to spark their interest, and now they're starting to go through complete series. So I mean, I really think we have some great people on the board, I think we have...
I think we have great directors. And and I'm pleased to hear from our residents, to me, which is most important, of first-hand testimony of the changes that are going on in our community. And and I thank everybody involved, and I hope the sky's the limit. And and as as people are aware, the council, especially Counselor Gitchia, he pushed for the Bookmobile for the library, which is here. And I'm seeing already that it's going out into the community. So thank you to everybody involved. And and I hope that we can continue these efforts.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say a quick thank you to to the four people that we just appointed for stepping up and being willing to contribute even more to the community, to improve it for for all of us. I think both the Sustainability Council and the Board of Trustees for the library both have big impacts on the livability of this city for all 100 and however many thousand we have today. And so I thank you for your efforts to continue contributing. And that's what it's all about. So thank you very much.
Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I hate to be redundant, but it would, I'd be remiss at my duties if I didn't take this opportunity to thank the people, whether it be for the Board of Trustees, for the library, or Sustainability Council. You are the people that movers and shakers and the different organizations and the different places that we certainly need people to oversee. So thank you for your dedication. Thank you for your time. I truly appreciate it. Today, time is a valuable commodity. Time to do what you want, but time to devote to different organizations in the city. So that's very, very kind, and I'm very grateful. And I wanted to say with my colleagues, thank you very much. Thank you.
Counselor Gitchia.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I just wanted to thank Jack, Courtney, Kevin, and Ryan. It's about the quality of the people who are being put on these boards. And I think that all of your dedication and your hard work will show in the future for not only the Sustainability Council, but the library. And and I think that that's the future of the city of these boards. And it's about the quality of the people. And and thank you for volunteering your time.
Thank you. And special thanks to Kevin, he lives in District 1. 411, Counsel Robinson.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to suspend the rules to allow speaker downtown business owner didn't realize in their hometown, they don't really have to petition the council, but they are a downtown business owner, and they'd like to address the council if possible.
A second. Is there a motion or a thing in the?
It's in regards to, I believe, an incident that occurred in the downtown business area.
Yeah, so miscellaneous is coming up. Do it then.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
411, Counsel Robinson, request city manager work with Lowell Police Department to explore utilizing the Ring platform to send important informational broadcasts out to their residents, seconded by Counselor Noon, Counselor Robinson.
Thank you. As a Ring owner, I stumbled across this. And I had the Centerville Neighborhood Group meeting. I brought it to the attention of LPD that was present. And they weren't sure whether or not they were registered with the Ring platform. What it is, is it's kind of like something, for example, like when they do, don't forget, it's 9:00 PM, lock your doors. If they sign up as a law enforcement organization with the Ring organization, when they send information blast out via Ring on their own secure channel, every Ring owner in the community that they can set will receive that notification. And so, I mean, it could be a valuable tool, just an additional avenue for them to get informational blasts out. And and I've seen other communities utilize it for whether lost children to stolen motor vehicles and everything in between. So I mean, I think it's something worth exploring. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes 412. Counselor Leahy, request city manager follow up with the council regarding the parking reconfiguration at Smith Cannabis on Rogers Street. Seconded by Counselor Janess.
Thank you. So I found out that, I guess, DOT already approved the the design. But I would like to know if we could just take a quick peek at it before they implement it. And just to make sure that they have expedited this. I mean, it's, you talk to anybody in that neighborhood, talk to anybody on the police department, probably a third of their customers go out the wrong way, near accidents every single day. So if we could just take a look at it before they go through the trouble of redesigning it possibly incorrectly again, that would be great. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes 413. Counselor Leahy, request city manager have crosswalk of Brolston and Bishop move to corner of Brunswick and Brolston. Seconded by Counselor Scott, Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. This one, again, Mr. Manager, this is the one that we worked on a couple of years ago. I thought it would have been moved. It's going to involve two pads for the accessibility. But it really needs to be moved as soon as possible. The existing crosswalk right now is too close to the railroad bridge. And everybody agrees that it's not the best situation yet. We didn't move it for about a year and a half. So if we could get this done before start of school next year, that would be great. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes 414. Counselor Leahy, request city manager have the transportation engineer place speed humps on Akin Drive for the benefit of police and other pedestrian crossing street. Seconded by Counselor Yem. Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. Again, this is just a safety issue. There are slow signs in the middle of the street. With the construction of the new high school, a lot of students are crossing in the middle of the street. And then again, with the parking situation at the Lowell Police Department, you know, people just don't pay attention. So I don't know why we weren't able to put speed humps there to experiment, to slow down the traffic for everybody involved. So police department, the Lowell High students, and just the people that live in that area. So if we could, if you could get back to me on that, maybe we could put some experimental speed humps out there. Thank you.
Counselor Gitchia.
If it's okay with the maker of the motion, I would probably have them look at a crosswalk over there. Because the kids are coming across trying to get over to one side from the other. And it probably would, I don't know that you need a speed hump when a police officer is walking across the street, but maybe. And the other question is, Mr. Manager, where are we out here on Merrimack Street for the employee crossing out here? I know we were looking at islands were going to be designed. And we were in the process of trying to get the crosswalk fixed right here so that the kids after school could cross. And we were looking at that. Do you know where we are in that design?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. That was something that the LRTA has put forth, and it's actually currently in design. And we're hoping to, quite frankly, have it done by next year. That's federal money that came in through the LRTA. Want to make sure I said that correctly.
Can I jump in?
Ms. Rose.
I'm jumping in.
Ms. Rose.
So we have construction planned for that project in the summer of 2025, so next summer, the construction. In the short term, you may have seen an email come out to you from Liz Altman, DPD, worked with Case, to solicit responses from local artists to do an art project where they're actually going to paint right on the street to essentially like create the, what will be the the bump outs. And we'll paint also the the crosswalk. So Liz has done a lot of research and has found that these sort of things will work to start slowing people down. And then the 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 work that we have anticipated to, again, go into construction in the summer of 2025 has the intended effect of slowing traffic down pretty substantially. So that that's the schedule. Short term will be a painting installation, and that's happening soon. We've already selected the artist. They've already done site, site walks and have that plan moving forward. And then actual hard construction will start summer of '25.
Do you know what happened to the stanchions that were out front that had beware of pedestrians crossing? Remember, we had the signs that were in the middle of the crosswalk, and they're all gone now?
They got run over.
Can we get new ones? And if it's okay with the maker of the motion, I just look at, you got a brand new high school down there. You got the Link project. I just think that a crosswalk somewhere in the area of the police station going across would be much better than speed bumps out there. Because we're trying to sell a beautiful building, and you got everything in between. If it's okay with the maker of the motion, I I'd just like to amend it and just ask to also look into putting a crosswalk out there.
Yeah, a speed, even a raised crosswalk would work. I mean, just something to close, slow down the traffic would be helpful.
I take that every day. I like a report first, if you can, Mr. Manager. Traffic engineer, I think that's begging for accidents and traffic if you put speed humps there, just like, I'm not engineer or expert. But, you know, we have a crosswalk at, right where the high school is, on Father Morris Sett and Akin Drive. You have a crosswalk at Merrimack and Akin Drive. It's like that five will walk between the two of them, but, you know.
I know. Human nature, everybody takes the shortest view.
I think you're asking for trouble.
Right. And if I can just make one other comment to the DPD planner. Appreciate all the effort. But again, I say this to all of us sitting here now. We've been pushing to redesign the front of City Hall for about five years. So all of us sitting here have to do a better job. I understand the planning process and all that. I'm not saying anything against DPD. I appreciate all the effort that's gone into it. But all of us, 11 people sitting here, when we make these motions, it shouldn't take five years to get something done. So we just need to work on that ourselves. Thank you.
All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Communication from city manager, motion response A, LRTA, Counselor Noon, Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the manager and his team for sharing a report from Dave Bradley of the Lowell Regional Transitors Law. Appreciate the report. The report really outlined what they're going to, their plan to use funding to basically improve the operation, you know, and enhance service. I think it's, you know, to dive into this, I would suggest that we refer this report to the Transportation Subcommittee. So the Transportation Subcommittee can invite a representative from VL RTA to come in at the meeting, Subcommittee meeting.
Motion by Counselor Noon, Central Transportation Subcommittee, seconded by Counselor Janess. All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a quick comment?
Please second the motion. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment for anyone who hadn't had a chance to read it. The the core message here is that LRTA is using the expanded funding to address their driver shortage. They've been able to do that. And when they do, what they're planning to do now that they have the drivers is there are three routes, or sorry, six routes that have been combined into three routes, basically since the pandemic, beginning of the pandemic. They're finally going back to six full separate bus routes. It's 1, 8, 3, 4, 6, and 9 are all going to be their own separate routes again, which is great. And they're improving the bus schedules, being able to make many of their routes every half hour instead of every hour, which is going to be, which is going to be key to getting people to be able to use them. So I want to thank the LRTA for their efforts. And I look forward to having a Transportation Subcommittee and to have this discussion in more detail. Thank you.
Counselor Gitchia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Manager Golden, could you send a thank you to the LRTA Administrator, Dave Bradley? He's been going through the same challenges that everybody has. And you see with the CDL drivers and trying to get bus drivers. And he made the correction that even the city has made. And you look at the staffing levels, he increased the salary and then got people to apply for the positions, and now he's full. So in the employment world, if you can get an employee to stay the first five years, especially in the government world, they're there for life. And and this is a smart thing to try to do, is draw people in. And it cut down the bus service back from an hour to the 30 minutes, and all the routes are there. And he also highlights in there the expanded weekend services. He's looking for the funding currently to try to do that. So if you please can thank him for, you know, giving us this memo and outlining the strategy that they're going through to try to give the residents the best service they can. And with the services that they're given, it will bring more people into our downtown in other areas if the services are there longer. Thank you.
Counselor Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not that I'm against the Subcommittee, Counselor Noon, but it's a pretty good response. I'm wondering what other questions you would have in mind for the Subcommittee.
Thank you, Counselor Dakota. I think that's not just for me, Counselor Dakota. There's also other speakers who want to spoke on this, who want to speak on this. They'd like to attend the Subcommittee. And I'm sure council, either anybody's here have any questions. That way, we can, you know, spend those time to talk about it at the Subcommittee.
No problem. Thank you. All's in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Motion response B, Al Mello, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Assistant City Manager Machado and the entire organization. Thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to this getting memorialized.
Motion response C, June 2024, faith-based leaders. Counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Greatly appreciated. I just, you know, I know they're going to be operating another Citizens Academy. And and I think I still have to provide a list of some that have reached out to me. And I hope we make a good effort forward to try to bring in some of the faith organizations in the community and let them start that relationship building. Thank you.
Motion response D, line painting. Counsel Gitchia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager, to Superintendent Huedon on this motion response. I'm still perplexed at how long it takes to get a three-year contract for line painting. You know, it came back in in February. Here we are in June, four months later, and we don't have it signed. And, you know, we even highlighted that, not this budget, last budget talks, how we were doing three-year contracts, and we're still at this stage. And do we know when this one will be signed?
Commander.
I shouldn't say signed, executed fully.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel it has been signed. The holdup was the bond authorization for three years. That was what has been causing this. And like you, I am very perplexed by the amount of time that this particular piece is taking, this this long line stuff is taking.
But the bond authorization should be for one year. Because it says with two one-year options for the city. So it's not a three-year, it's a two-year option contract.
That was still the contract.
Yeah.
The contracts problem was the bond.
You understand what I'm saying to you. I don't I don't understand how we can't get a bond that. We should have the bond at the bid.
From the company.
But, thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the manager and the police chief while he's here. I did notice this week, driving through downtown, that the crosswalks, they do reflect a lot brighter now. They're a lot wider, a lot brighter. And so I know we're doing some new systems. Thank you to the street sign department for making these new, implementing the new design of the crosswalks so that they really stand out and much more beneficial. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that we're talking about crosswalks and stuff like that. Can I interject a question through you to the city manager? Mr. Manager, is there any street sweeping schedules at all? Because I need one, for people are asking me when the street sweep is coming to their neighborhood or their street. I don't know. I don't know what to tell them. So I just, would I find it somewhere?
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. It should be up on the, it should be on the website.
Web page.
Sure, if it's if it's not, I'll make sure it is. And then I'll let the council know where that's located.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Motion response E, no motorized vehicles. Council Getchea.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think that this motion response could come at a better time after an incident on one of these. And when you're seeing the parks, parents are concerned with these motorized things sprinting around, like you take Shed Park's track where they walk. These things sprint around, and if we just can heighten a little bit of the patrols going around there, I understand in the outline that everybody's trained to deal with them and everything, and it just comes down to, how do we start trying to find these things? And we did have Captain Damaris speak at one of the neighborhood subcommittees, and he outlined strategies that would be put forth by the police station to start to deal with these issues. And I look forward to seeing those things happen. I won't out them in public on what they're going to do, but I can't wait to see these strategies take place and start to try to curb some of this stuff. So I thank the chief and Captain Damaris for their hard work on this issue. Thank you.
Motion response G, who can waive fees? Council Getchea.
On the waiving of fees, my question wasn't so much about the parks as it was outlined, but it was just about fees in general. So we have a schedule of fees in our ordinances. It basically, we outline what the fees are. And how they are waived, I don't come to the same conclusion as the solicitor does on some of the charter pieces that in the state says, but be that as it may, as Council Mercy would say, water and sewer without the board together, how do we look at the, or is there now an abatement board with all the board members on it? Have they been filled in? And how do we look at those fees? So that was really what the gist of this thing was. We create these ordinances, we create these fees. Are they being waived, and who had the power to do it? That's all. And they said the city manager. Thank you.
Good. Moving on to section six, votes of the manager. Oh, I apologize. Accept all motion responses. Got to place on file by Council Janess, seconded by Council Leahy. All in favor say aye. Opposed motion passes. Council Mercy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going into the votes from the city manager. I make a request if we could bundle 6.1 to 6.5, please.
By Council Mercy, seconded by Council Noon. All in favor say aye. Opposed motion passes. 6.1, vote to accept, expend $123,300 lead service line painting grant. 6.2, accept and expend FY24 earmarked funds lower locks. 6.3, accept, expend FY24 earmarked funds open space. 6.4, accept and expend FY24 earmarked funds vacant storefront. And 6.5, vote to approve and submit letter to Massachusetts Department of Transportation. We need a motion to adopt by Council Janess, seconded by Council Getchea. Roll call.
Council Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Council Leahy. Yes. Council Mercy.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Council Scott.
Yes.
Council Yem.
Yes.
Council Chow.
Yes.
Council Dakota.
Yes.
11 yays.
Section seven, ordinance from city manager, 7.1, ordinance amend fee schedule for waste. Give you a frustrating motion to refer to a public hearing on June 25, 2024, by Council Robinson, seconded by Council Janess. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Council Robinson, you have someone here who wants to speak?
Yes, please. I'd like to make the motion to suspend the rules to allow downtown business owner speak about an incident in downtown.
May I just take your name and address to the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to speak. My name is Jackie Pelletier. I own Fuse Bistro at 45 Palmer Street downtown. I'm here to talk to the council today about an issue I have for public safety. It's my understanding that, you know, city leaders have responsibility to provide a basic level of public safety by preventing crime and maintaining safe roads. And what I witnessed Saturday night, you know, was not any of that. 12 dirt bikes and one four-wheeler came down Middle Street at 10:30 at night. I've never seen that many at once. It was frightening, like a gang coming through. And then 10 minutes later, they came around the block, and then they came up Middle Street with no repercussions, no response, you know. And I'm really confused about the do not chase policy. I don't know where that comes from, because to me, that means that the safety of the person breaking the law, their safety is more, is higher valued than the safety of maybe pedestrians and guests and people on patios and elderly folks or any, literally anybody else is secondary to somebody breaking the law. So I really would like to see change. I'd like to see some sort of enforcement or maybe put detours out that just to change the flow of traffic and just don't allow it, have a no-nonsense policy because it's just not right, and someone's going to get hurt, and 12 dirt bikes could be 50. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Section eight, reports.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, getting on to what the speaker had spoken, I work right on Merrimack Street, right across from Little Delights. And since the first day of school this year, I go outside around 2:30, and across the street at Little Delights, there has to be 50 to 60 high school students hanging out, just waiting for a fight, it seems. Chief, if you could, I know you have a couple policemen that are blocking off Kirk Street for the LRTA buses to go, but that, that group needs to be broken up. It looks bad, and I've seen numerous fights going on there, and I think it's something that's just looks, looks bad for the city. So if you could help us out there, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Council Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Through you to the chief, if he would, because we did go over this policy about chase. Just try to explain it again about the 35 mile an hour. But my question really still comes down to, how come we can't box the men? How come we can't, especially in the downtown area where, and I know we'd have to wait for them, but it seems like they have a major patent down there. And if we just paid people a few hours overtime, can we box these kids in and stop this craziness? Because they won't get to 35 if we box in. I know other communities are doing this, but I'll let you.
All great suggestions. The no pursuit policy stems from the fact that case precedent, court precedent. The nature of the chase is, if we are to engage in a pursuit policy, it has to be for a serious felony. And these infractions, although dangerous to the public, the risk of a pursuit and endangering the public's life far outweighs the necessity of a pursuit. We just can't engage in those type, unless there's a violent felony involved or a serious risk for public safety, which would, based on the court precedents and the court case law, would allow our officers to do that. The boxing in, those types of things, these are all things that we consider and look at in developing plans and strategies to attack this problem, especially downtown. Everybody knows this is not necessarily a consistent pattern that we see, so we're trying to use a little bit of a crystal ball and look ahead and try to figure out where they are and what they're doing and use investigative strategies to target them. It's not as easy as it seems, and, you know, unfortunately, when we do attempt to stop many of these vehicles, they're operated by juveniles, who don't make good decisions, and they tend to flee. And that's a risk to public safety that our officers can't engage in, again, unless it's a violent felony. I don't know if that answers your question, Council.
No, it does. And I just wanted you to reiterate it again to the public, because we have been asking at the council for well over a year and a half. Since you became superintendent, we've all been trying to figure this out, and I think that there are some strategies that are coming that, that people may like to see that we've talked about in neighborhood committees with Captain Damaris. I just, if you could just get in touch with the business owner and just explain. But I do think boxing in may work downtown because these kids are showing patents and the same thing over and over. It gets a little bit warm out, and they're down there just running Merrimack Street up and down and just tormenting people who are outside trying to engage in like a good meal or something. So I do think it pushes people away from even wanting to be downtown, but thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on, reports, Subcommittee, 8.1, ad hoc Subcommittee Superior Courthouse Restoration, May 21, 2024. Council Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I left it. I'll definitely, the next meeting, I'll be presenting that.
Sorry.
I'll be presenting that at the next meeting if possible. Thank you.
Reports two, Parks Recreation Subcommittee, May 28, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I already made that report public on the day that I had that Subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk wants to hear it again, Council Mercy.
Oh, you want to hear it again?
Clerk wants to hear it again, he said.
I can do that.
You guys can talk after the meeting, okay? Yeah, all right. Art of the Clerk Oversight Personnel, May 30, 2024. We'll kick that to 6:25. Council Scott.
Yes, please, the next meeting.
Public Safety Subcommittee this evening, June 11, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The meeting continue, not continue, but if we didn't finish it, because we allowing the chief to review his policy, animal control policies, and come back to us sometime in September.
Got it. Motion to accept the reports, the reports of progress by Council Mercy, seconded by Council Noon. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 8.2, wire inspection, teleport communications, DBA AT&amp;T. Request installation of underground conduit at University Ave in Riverside Street. Motion to accept and adopt accompanying order by Council Janess, seconded by Council Robinson. Questions, comments? Motion to accept, adopt, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Nine petitions.
Mr. Mayor, can we combine 9-1 to 9-7, please?
Yes. 9-3 has been removed and kicked to 6:25. 9.1, two property damage claims. Motion to refer to law enforcement for a report recommendation by Council Getchea, seconded by Council Dakota. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. And then the next ones are all go to Transportation. Next three. 9.2, Mary Ann Rosa, request installation of handicap parking sign at 53 Mount Hope Street. 9.4, Ivory Lees Salgado, request installation of speed bumps on Stanley Street. 9.5, Ms. Jessica Segil, request installation of quiet zone signs in and around 26 Ottawa Street per Massachusetts general laws. Motion to refer to transportation engineer for report recommendation by Council Getchea, seconded by Council Chow. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 9.6 and 9.7, both national grid, request installation of one JO pole on Boston Road and installation of underground electric conduit at Foundry, Quebec, and Plain Streets. Motion to refer to public hearing on June 25 by Council Mercy, seconded by Council Noon. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Section 10, announcements. Council Mercy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have in the, it's called Try Transit Month. The entire month of July 2024, ride for free. You can't do any better than that. That's amazing. I may even ride the bus myself. On all LRTA buses and roadrunner vehicles, the LRTA would like to introduce public transportation to everyone in our community. So try transit and leave the driving to them. Experience the benefits of public transportation, convenient access to employment, hospitals, medical services, shopping destinations like malls. And who doesn't like to go to the mall? And you can go for free and save that money to spend it on a nice blouse or dress. Plazas and specialty stores, attractions, restaurants, museums, and parks. Less traffic congestion and reduce energy consumption, economic development, a clean air environment. So whether you are visiting the region or need to get to local destinations, the LRTA can get you there or connect you to the MBTA and other transit providers. So that's a good deal. I like that price, free. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I have some announcements from Mr. Rochus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today, this weekend, we have a Juneteenth flag raising Friday at 11:00 a.m. And Saturday, we've got a pride flag raising and a parade, beginning at 12:00 p.m. and ending at Boarding House Park for the festivities.
Great. Thank you. Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make announcement, a very, very exciting announcement of this fantastic band called The Gusto. Sounds very bravado, but it's called The Gusto. They're making their debut this Friday at 9:00 p.m. at the Warp and Weft. And we have a very famous celebrity singer making his debut again, no other than our very own Counselor Johnny Dakota.
Great.
So this is very exciting. You know, we all love music, so it's this Friday. Come on by for great entertainment. I'm going to be there, 9:00 p.m. A lot of us will be there, so looking forward to see everyone this Friday, 9:00 p.m. at Warp and Weft.
He's, he's my promoter, so just so everyone knows.
Is the manager the opening act for you?[1754.53]